It is 6:30. I'm calling the meeting to order. I just want to make one change to the agenda. If we could move up the email discussion from way down under Old Business Item B and move it into right after recognition of groups and individual visitors. So that Mr. Ryan can be on his way.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure. And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 26.
Move.
Second. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Sue. Any discussion?
Are you taking notes together?
Yeah.
No discussion.
It appears all are well. I was sort of looking for eyeballs. Okay. Oh, sorry, that's your -- yes, that was my like, we've all got -- Okay. All those in -- any discussion? No? All those in favor of approval of the minutes of April 26, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May they abstentions? The ayes have it. Communications, does anybody else have communications? I have kind of a bunch. I sent out updated work plans to everybody, just want to make sure you all got that. The heads, thank you. I've had a bunch of communications back and forth with Dan Normandow, which I actually copied to everybody because it's about the Alliance contract. Dan Normandow, do you know him?
I did not get.
I just --
Just now you did.
Just now.
Okay.
You made the copies.
I haven't read them yet, so, okay.
I had a few back and forth discussions with Lee and Lori on the paving bid, which I will go over with you and I gave you a copy of the final paving bid as it went out. I've had a couple comments from people who contacted me with confusion about the new website. That they're going to the old website and so they're thinking we're not warning our meetings and --
So they're not directed to the new?
No.
I went there once.
I went there myself, too, and I was like, "Oh, my God, we haven't warned a meeting in a month." And so --
I don't think it's been in the paper either this week.
Oh, it wasn't in the paper?
I don't think so.
Check on that. But I'll double check on that. But if there's something we can do to direct people to the new website, I've troubleshoot people through it when they've called me, but I wonder about the people that aren't calling me. I also had another contact from the family that is interested in and just wanted an update on the limited school transfer. I have not heard anything from Putney, so that's a lack of communication in that case. I mean, I haven't heard from them, not a lack of communication, but there has not been communication from Putney, but I updated the family on that. I had an email from a parent who has had frustrations with the My School Bucks account, that they had a leftover account, $10, and wanted to transfer it for new -- to a new -- to their next student and had all kinds of back and forth and just expressing her frustration, but she was going to still continue going after My School Bucks to try to -- it wasn't a lot of money, but just she wanted to donate it to charity or give it to her other child.
I had no problem.
When you did it?
When Travis graduated, I had no problem. I just hit the button, transfer money, done. It's right online.
Maybe I will direct you to that parent and maybe there's a button that she doesn't know where it exists, or they may have changed the program, too, the last couple years.
It looks the same as -- I don't notice any difference, but --
Did you say, did you talk to her about using the number of --
I did, yes. Yes. I haven't heard back, she was gonna try, so I haven't. We kind of found a workaround, so, but I haven't heard back if that worked. And Mike Morawicki contacted me about pre-K and we had talked about the whole pre-K and pre-K was the whole S-251, 257, one of those numbers, the miscellaneous bill on education that was going to change how pre-K was funding and it was a pretty poorly worded bill at the time in terms of how the ADM was going to be calculated and it looked like it was going to very much penalize us. They had referred that from Education to Human Services Committee that Mike Morawicki sits on and he was hearing testimony, so I relayed our concerns about the ADM calculation being calculated for next year, because we've been making plans and it's very nice for Board to make plans. We're kind of like a business. It's nice to know what your revenues and expenditures are going to be. And also had some critiques about the, some of the language that they weren't saying, how the ADM was going to be calculated. And I looked today before I came, it looks like they now have gone back to -- have you looked at it?
I have not looked at it.
Okay. I'll just finish this up quickly. It looks like they put in ADM amounts, it's going to continue to be .46 ADM if it's outside, I mean, the current version of the bill, this isn't a done deal, but it's getting towards the end. .7 if you're providing 20 hours in-house of pre-K, so that's a real benefit to us for the pre-K implementation. So it's gone from being really harmful to us to looking pretty good and they're gonna -- it looks like they're going to keep doing the funding the way they've been doing it, but I just did a cursory read, so, anyway. Did any -- yes?
I didn't know I was supposed to tell Mike was the communication that I communicated with him also.
Oh, good. Excellent.
Oh, I guess we have to learn what we call communications and what we don't call communications.
Oh, I see what you're saying, you didn't know it was communication. Yeah, yeah. Well, he had contacted me then as well, so then I said I was --
He contacted both of us.
That our Board had talked about it, I was representing my opinion, but I'm sure you hear the same thing for everybody else on the Board. And there was a communication, do you want to talk about the litigation? Do you want to do another communication?
We got a communicate from our attorney that the litigation against us is, what was the exact word?
Dismissed for failure to prosecute.
Is that what it was?
Something that --
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, that's what it was.
Dismissed for failure to prosecute.
Dismissed without prejudice. So at this point?
Ability to refile.
Yes, they could, this person could refile, but at this point, we're not expecting anymore.
Excellent. Recognition of groups and individual visitors. Welcome. Glad to have you here.
The Select Board is here.
Yes.
One fit.
Mr. Ryan, are you here for anything but helping us with our email situation?
That's what I'm here for.
Excellent, okay. And Ms. Glickman?
And I'm here because I see that the lunch program's back on the menu.
I should menu, but I meant agenda. So well done. Zeke is gonna have to really, you know, that dry wit. He's gonna have to step up his game. If it's okay with the Board, would, could we maybe move that up in the discussion?
Yes.
That'd be great. She can go, she's a hardworking teacher, okay. So how about we move that after the email discussion? Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Perfect.
Take it away, Michael, for emails.
Okay. Kevin, thank you for coming. When I -- as if on cue.
I always whistle at Kevin.
No wonder people don't --
When we last met, so, we have, we have approved as a Board the idea of having individual -- and please, anyone, jump in if I missed it or correct me after I'm done speaking. We had kind of approved the idea of getting first name, last initial email addresses with the Dummerston.org email address and then when that was forwarded on to you, a series of questions came back that raised further questions. I didn't feel like I had necessarily the authority to answer about how should we, you know, Lori was suggesting, Lori Frichette was suggesting that traditionally it's been last name @Dummerston and that presented a change to how we had agreed to do it and then you provided additional information about how emails might come to one common email address and then get disseminated out to everyone else's email address. And I just thought it would be helpful for the Board to talk with you about what it is that we're hoping to do instead of a flurry of emails back and forth. And so we appreciate you coming. And I guess I also wanted to say that I think when we did discuss this after I presented your questions and said, you know, I've suggested that maybe he could come to a meeting and we could talk about this stuff, you know, all together at the table so that we come to a consensus about what works easily for you and what works for us. And so we're glad you're here. So toward that end, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, everyone wants an individual email address that goes to @Dummerston.org and that we are of the opinion that a common email address for every Board member would be a problem, because we want to be able to send and receive email addresses through that, what do you call it, email address? Yeah, email, through that email address. And we're also wary, I think, of having a common email address where it would be like a communication with the entire Board and perhaps look like a meeting that was happening outside of the open meeting law. So we are cognizant of that, of that. And I believe that every individual person could speak to whether they want to forward it to an email address, or perhaps we will come up with a list that I will copy and give to you or will email you perhaps after the, after the meeting. So, does anyone have any other questions?
Nope.
About the email addresses?
I think we could, that we did decide we would really prefer to have the first name and second initial because of the difficulty of so many --
Of our names.
Emily and I are cool, but, you know, we could get lost in McGilly and Megaliano and Normandow in a heartbeat, so.
The response that Michael referred to was Lori's. Yes. And in the end, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
You know, I mean, it doesn't matter. My thing, which I was trying to find out, was what are you trying to accomplish? Right. That's all. What are you trying to get to? That's all. I didn't really hear that, so. Gotcha. You know, so if you're, if you're, if you're talking about individually going out and shooting out emails to people, is that, is that what you're? Individually, I believe sending and receiving from that, you know, MichaelM@Dummerston.org email address. Being able to individually send and receive so that others wouldn't be, others on the Board wouldn't be getting the same communication that I would only be able to send and receive from Michael, the Michael M account, Jody from a Jody account and so on. And I believe this, this came about when we were presented with the idea of having WSASU email addresses and we thought it might be more consistent to have Dummerston email addresses, so that's what we voted to do when it was suggested that we get in touch with you. That's how we got, and that's why you're sending emails. So five individual email addresses? Yes, and so do you need the forwarding email address to where we're sending it? Well, if you want to forward it, yeah. Okay, okay. And how easy is that? I guess the other questions are like, how easy is that to change? Were that some of the other questions you guys had?
I'm not following you on this forwarding bit.
So if you have a, you would have a JodyN@Dummerston.org email address for Jody and she would see that by logging in where? I guess it's -- Well, it would, you know, we gotta get to that point. Right, okay. What do you want to, you know, do you, do you want to actually, having a municipal email address, you know, it's easy to give out, you can put it on a card, here you go, and you can do all that. If you want to then actually respond with that address, then yeah, we actually have to set up an email box for you. Now, mails, once you've got the email box set up, you know, it's easy enough to just say, "Okay, we've got the box and we can send it to Jody's home email address and she can send it to her Uncle Ralph's, it doesn't matter, I mean, you can do whatever you want with it." You know, I mean, that's, that's, that's all part of it. It will be an individual email address. There are, there are some things that you can do to say, "Okay, now as long as I've got this individual email box," is what I meant to say, "I've got this individual email box, you can configure your Google account, which is up to you, but you can configure your Google account to say, 'Oh, okay, if I get an email in, it's been forwarded to my Gmail account, then I'm just going to respond right from Gmail and it's going to go out from my Dummerston.org address.'" Okay. That, to me, would be the most seamless thing, I would think, because, I mean, and, you know, my description to you was that, was that it's functionally a pain to say, "Well, okay, now you, now you have to go out and check this other email box." True. Functionally, that stinks, you know, that's a not good idea.
Some people like that on this Board, so I watch what you say.
Some people like to go out to another email address?
Yeah.
Really? Okay.
See, I have mine all coming in on my phone, all my emails, and I like them separate.
Oh, you can keep them separate.
Right, so I don't want it forwarded to another email that I already have on my phone.
Some people want to keep it separate, so this works great. Actually, I was just saying, like, careful where you go down there.
Okay, so you're gonna have to tell me then, which, who wants it forwarded and who doesn't?
Right.
Gotcha.
But I think the whole idea is that for, as a municipality, that we, our emails are going to still reside in a box someplace, so if there's a FOIA request or something, you can just boom, go right through that.
Yeah, you can hop on any browser and go there and log in.
Yep. Perfect, I think that's really the, that's really the thing we're trying to accomplish and then how we fit it into our own lives if we can forward it. That works for me and some people like to open email accounts.
Jo Jean?
Does that mean, yes, dear, does that mean that you have to come to my house?
No.
And set my email out up?
No, no, I don't do house calls.
Yes, you do. You do house calls for everybody in Dummerston.
No, no, that's, that's all something that --
It's done.
That I just do in my office and set it up and set up forwarding or not. And then what I'll do is if you do have forwarding, I'll give you the, the information that you would need if you wanted to control it all from another account, then you can. You don't have to.
So I have a Gmail account.
Yep.
So then I would have this account, too, and both of them would come in on my --
Only if you want it that way.
Computer.
You have a choice, you each have a choice.
You know how I'm with this, so.
I'll help you, Joe.
Yeah, well, how about that?
Okay.
Yeah. The only question, I mean, okay, so, so, let's reiterate, you're each going to get a discreet Dummerston.org mailbox, an actual mailbox that requires you to log in. Then each of you has a choice, whether you want to just leave it at that so that it's, you know, it's all fenced off and it's like, okay, there's my thing, I don't want to worry about it otherwise, or if you are inclined to want to know that, oh, an email just came in and it actually goes into your regular email account, so you'll see it. And it's still in the other account, or the other mail, the original mailbox, it's still there, but you can do that if you want.
So therefore it is still there, so that would --
Yeah.
Yes.
Take care of our problems.
Yeah, that was something.
Yes. It just sends you a copy, so.
So maybe just a beep to your, to your own email to let you know that it's in would be fine.
And you can, I mean, in this email box that you get, I mean, you could configure it as another, on your phone, you could configure it if you wanted to on your phone as well as another email account, but you don't have to. I mean, it's up to you, you know, just, okay, think of it like this, you go out, you go out to Outlook.com and you set up another email account. That's what you've got.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the fact of using this new one just for the school Board and not mixing it with other emails.
But it still exists in there, so you can go back and log in and see what was there, it doesn't go anywhere, so.
I guess what I'm not aware of, can you configure it so that if it were forwarded, was forwarded to your, to your other personal email address, if you reply to it, it goes out from behind my email list?
Doesn't go out from the --
Yeah, that's, that's what the town does. Okay. The town, all of the Dummerston.org accounts for the town, none of them have mailboxes. There's one, the EMD, that's it. Everybody else, the Select Board, the Listers, everybody, they have Google Mail accounts underneath them. Okay. And they log on to their Google account. And what happens, like with, you know, a good example is the Listers, and this is where I thought you might end up going, but if you send an email to listers@Dummerston.org, that goes to each of the Listers plus to their, their departmental Gmail account. Okay. When mail gets sent out from that Gmail account, it goes out as listers@Dummerston.org. So no one other than the Listers who log in know that there's even this other underpinning. It's the same for every single other address there, too.
I'm just thinking that not all the emails that go back and forth between the Board are for everybody.
Right, right, yeah. All I'm saying is that, is that once you've got an account set up, it can go, you can construct it however you want to construct it.
I like this setup, I think we don't run into the risk of violation, violation of open meeting law with everything happening individual, it's all there if we need to get a FOIA request and it's more clear that we're communicating as a Board member and municipality, not as an individual, so I think it solves all of our issues.
Yeah, and what the town does, I mean, all of those, all of the emails that are in there to address the Vermont Open Meetings Law, they, like the Select Board, the town clerk also gets a copy of everything that goes to the Select Board. It's public.
Yeah.
It's public, you know, so that's. So Joe Carroll will get a copy? You can do that.
Yeah, she's --
I was joking, I'm sorry.
She wants that.
You can have.
She's the only person that's making that mistake.
Anybody have any other questions? So I'm sorry, because some of them were just tech to vote questions and we appreciate you coming. Thank you. So I'll put together a list and I'll email you. Great. Good. And I will then, since I'll have everyone's address, I will communicate with each of you, give you a temporary password and off you go. Great. Cool.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, thanks for your time. Really appreciate it.
Good to see you, Kevin.
Take care.
Good to see you.
Good to see you all.
Take care.
Thanks.
Moving along to the lunch program bid discussion.
I can't move, so I can see it.
So I guess I kind of want, Joe Carroll, maybe if you could --
I can tell you what we have. So we got something, April 12, I think, but that, an ad winner's in paper on April 10 requesting bids for all the schools in WSASU for a one-year contract that's renewable for four years following that. There was a pre-bid conference right after April vacation where contractors interested in putting in a request for proposal could come around to the schools and ask their There's a public bid opening on May 16 and the contract will be awarded on May 22. So I was, and this is true for every school except for Putney that has their own lunch program.
I didn't know we're going out as a whole group, are we, so we can't be separate?
So I have information on that. So the high school will have a different, not necessarily a different vendor, but they have different criteria because high, once you get to high school, they have to have more food on the plate. Brattleboro has a, Brattleboro Town has a very specific requirements for the, for their food service and they've developed that over the last couple of years, which include very low to no sugar, no mechanically separated meats, something about eggs, tuna, you probably know more than I do, what am I missing, trans fats, so there are very, very specific guidelines that Brattleboro Town will be, the vendors will have to be looking at that because that's what Brattleboro Town will continue with and they know that will cost more money. Guilford, Vernon and Dummerston all would be considered sort of in one, I don't know, one response, one pricing response, I guess it's called, because all are, have similar services, similar ways that food is served and number of students and number of meals a day and that.
Yes, sir.
So you don't, you're, you're encouraged to, to be a part of one of those groups, but likely it would not be, definitely wouldn't be part of the high school and depending upon what you wanted to do with the changes and the type of food that you'd be interested in, likely you would be part of the Guilford, Vernon, sort of price range.
Hmm.
Yeah, because I thought we were going to be able to do it ourselves, totally.
And so how does that decision get made then? It's already gone out to bid, so we are currently part of the Guilford, Vernon, Dummerston bid?
Everybody is part of, every, so Brattleboro?
Oh, wait, they're bidding, so?
Everybody goes out.
Everybody will be using one vendor, then?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
But all, all the, every, like, like I just described, the Brattleboro Town?
Right.
Requirements, that is part of this bid. The high school requirements are part of the bid and the others that we've put Guilford, Vernon and Dummerston together are part of the bid. That bid went out together.
Okay.
But there's a different section in each one. Michael, was it finance the other night? Did you get finally the full bid spec?
It's, it's huge.
It's a book.
It's literally, yeah.
Yeah.
It got the RFP, it was the RFP, right?
Yeah, and then, right.
Yep.
But within that, the whole thing goes out, but it's broken up into different parts.
And so if we liked one vendor and somebody else, and Vernon liked a different vendor, is it structured that we could go that way?
I believe so. Oh, it's not, the state's not going to like it, but I believe it's structured that you can go that way. Okay. Right now Vernon and Dummerston use the same vendor?
Can we specify foods like Brattleboro does?
Oh, sure.
Is the food brought in or is it cooked here?
It's cooked here. And it's cooked at Academy, but sent to?
Green Street.
Green Street and O'Hare Road.
But we have people here.
But you have people here. Yeah, and likely if you went with a different vendor, you could request that you have the same people here that you like those people, or you could request, we need different people here.
You know, I've long been supportive of the people who want more of a firm-to-table program and better food and I don't know how you go about doing that. I mean, I don't know how Putney manages, really.
They won't be for long as independent.
Unless, yeah, they will have to supplement local funds, because you can't unless, unless you have approximately 300-plus kids, you can't sustain a program like theirs.
Is there some way that we could team up with Putney to?
With 300-plus kids.
With 300-plus kids and have it, I mean, cooked and brought over is definitely not ideal.
But they would never be able to, as they're set up right now, they're having to increase personnel to manage Putney as an independent place. If they were to take us on?
They'd have to hire?
Yeah.
They'd have to have --
And the reason it's as good as it is is because of Carrie Harlow.
It is, everything's always as good as it is because of the person.
Right. And, you know, and it's not that we're not farm-to-school, I mean, we have our same fresh fruit, vegetable, whatever, the food is significantly better with its boat than it had been with cafe services, which is what Brattleboro has. And, you know, it's sort of just comes down to the rapport that the people have with the school and with the kids, because, you know, they, they have a very fresh salad bar every day, they have options, they make, they make, it requires us to pay less with their à la carte things, that was sort of a nightmare at first, but it is one of those things that makes money. And when we meet to talk about the menu planning, we run into, you know, we'd love more, I don't know, burritos and whatever.
Taco bar, I was going to say.
Taco bar, potato bar, that sort of thing.
Potato bar, yeah.
And yet the things that more kids participate in is, you know, brunch at lunch, which is just hard even to say, it's the amount of people's are up out there.
Well, why don't we do a white with brunch and?
What I'm saying is though, it's What I'm saying is though, it's a thing that makes the money. You know, it's a thing that more kids participate in and what you get in your bids is they're projecting what they're going to need to, what their participation rate needs to be in order to make the program solve or make it for the school to pay, not over the amount that they've budgeted to pay.
I see. Can, you, so the Academy has fresh picks that we used to have that I remember was not really popular with my family anyway, speaking for...
For fresh picks?
Fresh picks?
What, what do you mean, or the cafe service?
Cafe services, sorry, cafe services. Sorry, sorry, sorry. And so, but Academy, of course, it may be just the quality of the cook, but I think Academy has a lot of fresh stuff. So is that because they're supplementing their food program with the Food Connects and we don't have to pay for that, or because our program includes that fresh vegetable, fruit thing?
Our program doesn't include it. I, I think it's because they have either the mass of students.
So eligibility for...
The eligibility of the universal lunch and breakfast.
I'm looking at it right now for Academy is there's enrollment of 352 free is 288 December eligibility, right? And they're projecting for 20, 20, next year, the following year, for the next four years, that 352 will qualify because of the way the rules are changing, right?
Yes, we have 39.
Right, and we have 33.
So they have 100% participation?
100%.
Because they, so they don't have to worry about these things because they're...
And they have a good, and that provides a good bargaining for when they sit down with their program and say, these are the things that we want. And I think it's been a process over time.
It certainly has been. It's taken at least two years to make the changes. It's taken the principal going into the pantry, pulling things off the shelf and reading the labels and saying, look at this, this is not what we agreed to, take it back, bring us what we agreed to.
Okay, so I'm not, I don't... Yeah, no, I...
But he's retiring.
No, this is, that's so helpful to hear, because we're kind, like, Putney's always been held up as the be-all and end-all of food programs. And so, well, maybe we could make them more stable and maybe we could pony up a little bit more money for a better program. We might get more participation with a better program if we teamed up with Putney in some way and thought creatively about that. And then it's really helpful to hear that, well, maybe if, like, I did that at home, I could just do that here. Like, this is not what mommy said. Mommy said no Gatorade. You know, that maybe there's a role, not you, not you.
No, but I was just saying, I mean, when we had independently, with the chef.
Right, right.
People raved about the food. I mean, it was great. And very quickly, we were $47,000 in the hole. I mean, it's just...
Right. And I don't think it's gotten any easier to provide lunches.
Right, and that was without managing half of the requirements that have come in even since then with oven temperatures and serving temperatures and...
You mean the RFP is 138 pages?
It's ridiculous.
It's crazy, and the regulations, but like, Brattleboro's requirements for food in this were highlighted to us at the Finance Committee meeting and pointed out. And they go on for a couple pages, and it is really what Lyle was talking about, like, you know, no hydrogenated. I don't know exactly, I can't remember exactly, so I don't want to misquote. Very long document, but the no trans fats was in there for sure. There was some discussion because it was like, aren't trans fats banned anyway? Like, was a comment from a fellow Finance Committee member. But there's a lot, there's a lot. They have, they have high, high standards at Brattleboro, but the conversation was also talking about how it was facing over a number of years. And because of the, you know, someone else is paying for it in essence, right?
The federal government's paying for it.
Right, so you got leverage is what you're talking about when you're, when you're working with a food service provider saying like, you know, you've got to do these things. It might cost a little more money than you're used to bidding on something like this. But these are the standards that we are, we are going to ask board to maintain. I don't think we have that same kind of leverage is my point.
Right, right. We have a, you have a guest here who's giving me a good idea just with her presence. She's going to love that. But you came to hear and ask about that and you can bring us news of Academy School and what goes on there.
You know, I'm kind of here with two hats. I am a Dumerson parent, but also I do work at Academy School. So I do see what can be done in a public education food program. And I do understand they have a very different scenario, given their numbers and their universal lunch program. But I really feel that we actually can use this as an opportunity to make some real innovations to the school program, lunch program here at Dumerson, because it's been something that a number of parents have brought to the school board. I mean, this goes back more than a decade at this point, since my older daughter was in kindergarten. And I really think it's a priority. I think it needs to rise to the top now that, you know, some of the other priorities have kind of settled down a little bit. Especially because we're at a time where we're reevaluating what the program looks like. And we have a great resource with Food Connects. And I know a lot of people are saying it's not sustainable, but they actually work with a lot of small schools all over the state. This isn't just a program that's working here in our district. And they have a lot of know-how about how you can crunch these numbers and how you can make it work. So my plea as a parent and someone who keeps bringing this up time and time again is to at least make an effort to connect with Food Connects. They do a great job at the Brattleboro Town Schools, and I know that they work with other smaller schools in the area. And I don't even think Dumerson has had much of a conversation with them about what it would look like.
Yes, we have.
We have, okay. Because I know there was talk about forming a committee back in the winter, the last time I was here, but I never heard anything about a committee forming that I volunteered to be on. So I haven't gotten any information about where that conversation has gone at this point, so that's why I'm here tonight.
I thought the committee was about, for the bidding process, being part of that whole process, which is what it was like last time we bitted out. The committee came, we, you know, as an individual school, sent the request for proposals, interviewed the different companies. That didn't happen. Last year, we met with Food Connects twice. And once was with a committee. No, sorry, I don't know why you weren't at that meeting.
She of all people who's been bringing this to town, meeting and everything else.
Last year though, so it was early, so...
There just seems to be some communication breakdown around the food program at Dumerson with the parents. Because I know there's a lot of impassioned parents about this issue. And it's been many, many years this keeps getting brought up again and again. So like, I had no idea that the conversation had even taken place with Food Connects. So that would be helpful to have some perspective on that and why it was deemed not an option for the school.
Because it costs too much money. It was, they work with schools for this amount of money. And I suppose, I, this is off the top of my head. When we first started talking about it with Food Connects, it was like $2,000 and we were the school that wasn't doing it then. It's since risen. And that's just to get them at the table to basically help us improve the program. So didn't, there wasn't that money in the budget available to do it. And I would say that it's close to $8,000 now, but that might be, I got that from the last meeting we had. Was it this year? Was it last year? Up there? Because as, you know, what started as one person working with schools has now become much more of a viable organization, working with many schools and additional people.
Overhead.
But it is their mission as a nonprofit to make these programs work. I mean, they're not in this to make money. They're in this to bring high-quality local produce into the schools.
Well, I'm wondering if...
No, I mean, I just want to put that out there because, of course, I wasn't at the meetings, but it just seems not to serve their interests as an organization to just say, you know, this is what we charge, too bad you can't pay it and walk away. That maybe that conversation, there's a little more depth to it that needs to be explored.
I'm wondering about putting together a committee that would, I feel like the board handling this is... Is maybe not the best venue and having Joe Carroll do it individually is maybe not the best venue. And so maybe putting together, I think Amy volunteered to be on the food committee. Was that the Farm-to-School Food Committee?
She had been on it, yep.
I think she, I think she volunteered, said she wanted to do that. And Stephanie Bonin had said as well. And so maybe have some parents and teachers who are impassioned about it to just beat them down on their price or whatever we can do to try to bring it to, I mean, $8,000 just to, before we've even bought in, brought in any food seems like a lot. But maybe that, you know, maybe that comes with something else and so I'm not going to say what's not...
I can show you that. I mean, I have that information. And one other piece I just want to add from my experience at Academy is a key part of making this whole puzzle fit together is having a chef at the school who has the knowledge in working with this program and is able to, to do the ordering and incorporate it into the menus with all these restrictions that are in place. And I think that's really been the key to the Academy School's success is we've had now a series of phenomenal chefs who've been very innovative and creative about doing that. So I don't know, again, it's like getting the cart before the horse. We kind of need the person with a vision who's going to be cooking the meals to drive this process a little bit. And with the timing of the bid right now, I don't know what that would look like. I mean, forming a committee while we have like three weeks before this bid comes in, I'm not sure how the timing would work.
Does a chef come with these people or do you have, does Academy have their own chef?
No, they have Cafe Services who's hired the chef to come in.
Yeah, they're employed by the vendor.
Employed by Cafe Services, yeah. And I think, however this shakes out, whatever company you go with, I think the process to follow is what Academy's done, which is here are our top priorities. And their top priority was sugar at breakfast, I think, and getting rid of sugar at breakfast, which is not a problem here, but that's their top priority. You would have to set with your committee that you're talking about, what's your top priority? And start working and picking off things so that you have higher quality, healthier meals. Because, you know, Rachel said it as well, it did not happen overnight. It has been a process over a few years now. But it does mean somebody has to follow up as well because, you know, Andy, I don't know recently or how often he goes into the kitchen to check.
It's a priority.
But it is a priority.
So is Academy different than Green and Oak?
No, because the meals are made at Academy and taken.
Taken over. Like Putney making a meal and bringing it over?
Yeah, that's an interesting model, like Putney making a meal and bringing it over. Boy, there's some, so I just feel like this is, this seems harder than the paving bid, which seemed really easy, which was really hard. And it seems like it's on par with pre-K, which is like a full-time job trying to manage that. And I'm thinking, I think a top priority is trying to see how we can have in our bid process some say in who's our chef. I really think Jody hit the nail on the head. It's the person.
It's the person.
It's the person. And you need somebody who wants to be doing it. And of course you have to follow up on the best of people, but you're not going to turn somebody into a great chef who's interested in healthy meals and, and coming up with some options for us and maybe reaching out to Putney and saying, it might bail them out too. And it might, it might require an investment on our town's part. We'd have to think long and hard about that, but a conversation is cheap and so giving, having a committee do that might be easier. It might not be, but...
So we have, I see two committees here then, because we have a school food advisory committee that meets twice a year. And it's comprised of parents and teachers and students. And we, you know, come up with agendas. We send them to KIRA, who's the food service advisory liaison with the state. The summary, you know, we haven't, just, part of the meeting is sort of problem solving our immediate problems. And that's, you know, why is a serving for a first grader the same as a serving for an eighth grader? Or what do you do with seconds? We never sort of get beyond that. But we had prioritized our goals for healthy meal options that students will eat, portions commensurate with students in elementary and middle school, friendly, supportive staff that complement the culture of the school, easy access to nutrition guidelines for students with food allergies and diabetes. And, you know, sort of reviewing the guidelines for our school charging policy. And I plan to stick over that with you in the summer, how to make sure that that money's coming in. So there's this going on. And we have, you know, some luck, depending on how willing the food program is to work with that. But when they're there and under contract, you only have so much.
Right, that's why I'm thinking now is a good time to convene somebody quickly, somebody who might know Andy Petrucci, who might be able to talk to him about his nefarious methods for getting his way. I don't know if you know anybody who might, I don't, I'm just, I'm throwing this out there as a, as a thought, as a way to sort of, in this short term, do what we can do in this bidding process.
Well, there's, yeah, and I think that's great and we should, we should, I think we should. And I wonder if Rachel would be willing to do that.
I'm happy to talk to him, but I don't think that's going to further this discussion that's happening for Dumerson School right now. I mean, I think between Lyle and I, we have a basic idea of how things have evolved at the Brattleboro Town Schools. I think the crux of the matter right now, at this point in time, is that we might have a new vendor and with a new vendor, we might have a new chef, and that's what's time-sensitive right now. And we might need some people who feel it is a priority to get the right chef on board to try to start making these changes happen.
I get, so I guess my, my point was that if Andy has been able to specify his chef or have input in his staff, I'd like to find out what he has in the contract because that is what, I think that's a key issue.
What he has in the contract and what he looks for, you know, what he would look for in a chef. I mean, he's a resource that we can use that, I mean, I don't, you will know a lot more about this than, than I will.
I think it's like three things we're dealing with right now. We're dealing with this kind of thing to get the chef. We're dealing with who to choose. And I think we're dealing with, you know, throughout this year, having a committee talk to other people and see if they can come up with something better. And maybe it's a whole bunch of parents and then, but keeping Joe Carroll in the loop.
Well, I'm going to suggest also that maybe the members of the committee, if there is a committee that gets established, try to work with the chef that we do get as well. So instead of like just throwing up our hands and saying, well, that's it, we got the chef, you know, can we get some, you know, follow-up from people on a regular basis to kind of...
Check on them.
Keep the fire under that pot simmering. I don't, you know, I mean, like, I mean, we're going to get, we're going to, I mean, we're going to try to get the best that we can get, but in the end, we're going to, we're going to end up, you know, we're going to get a food service contractor, probably. Well, I don't know what's going to happen exactly, but to the extent, whatever we do get, I think we should try to work with to the best of our ability as well. That's my point that I'm trying to make.
And maybe it is bringing in Food Connects. Maybe that is the best money spent in the end to try to improve if we're going with a contractor. I think it's a four-year contract, is it?
Well, it's a one-year contract.
One year?
But you can...
But include...
The option to...
Look, we can, we can use them.
So with the amount of money, and I, and I don't want to be the person that says, but, 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 but. It's not, but, with the amount of money that our program has available to pay people, you have very, not very highly paid people and not very many people clamoring for the position. And, and what is it? Cafe Services have that problem here, as did Fitzville. So we could do many of the things tomorrow, or, you know, next year on the first day of school, if we increase the subsidy that we're providing for the food program tonight, you know. If we want to, instead of whatever it is, 13,000 that we have, if we want to do more than that, we can have these things. if we want to do more than that, we can have these things. But I, I think that's one of the, I think that's what we're going to pop up against.
I, I, I think it, so I'm just thinking if there is an open discussion about it and a, you're probably right. I'm eighty percent certain that you're probably right, but that if things could be really quantified for the board and we can have a discussion about, in a tight budgeting season, which it will be for the rest of our days, you know, what, where is our priority with our dollars? I mean, if you spend a dollar on something, you don't spend it on something else. And where is the town's priority on this? And have a discussion and say, okay, maybe if we brought Food Connects in, we think this, and get a recommendation about what the best thing to do is. I just think it would be a worthwhile discussion for us to have. And it would, and I think, you know, it, maybe we can't do anything, but at least we understand why we can't do anything. But it also, you never know when creative ideas will happen in the process of looking. And I think we shouldn't, if we have people that are, and believe me, I was a little, like, anybody who knows me, I'm all about food, I'd love to do it, but I, like, I can't, I can't do another project right now. So if there are people in the community who are interested and have access, you know, Stephanie Bonin knows something about food, you know, so I just think it's a worthwhile activity and try to put together. Amy has a lot of experience with bidding on food programs, so she would be a really great resource for this. So if we can convene a committee to look at this, and we have a whole year now, so it could be, we could start talking with Putney as Putney's trying to figure out what to do with theirs. Maybe that is the way to go. I'm not, but I'm, I'd love to have someone give the pros and the cons and some rough dollars sketched out so that we can all talk about it. I don't want to put it on Joe Carroll to do that.
Oh, no, I mean, to convene a committee now to look at, to be part of making decisions around the bidding thing happening now? Or from, once the contract's awarded to move forward with?
I think really once, the committee would be once the contract moves forward. But if we could have some guidance on if we could find ways to hire a good chef in the meanwhile, that's going to be a key, a key factor, you know.
And Andy, Petrucci, Mark Spino, Jerry Curry, Kira Sawyer-Hardigan, whom you spoke of, myself, we met with Cafe Services multiple times, not the chef, but the people above, saying, this is what we expect and we expected a chef who's going to be able to implement these things. And we're paying the money, we can make these demands.
And I think, you know, a committee could be the ones that go into the kitchen and pull off, do what Andy does and pull the stuff off the shelf. You don't have to put that on Joe Carroll.
That's what I'm thinking too. And I'm thinking that, that, you know, whether, I don't think it's necessarily like, whether it's a discreet committee just to deal with the bid process or, you know, just to deal with afterwards. Maybe we start forming a committee that works long-term on the solution to better food for Dummerston, you know? And that, that could be involved on a longer-term basis.
Thank you, that's what I was trying to say perfectly.
You must know some people that you could get to join a committee.
It's a pretty heavy hitter list that you came up with earlier. I mean, if it was, you know, Amy, Rachel, Stephanie Bonin, Keith Marshall, it's, you know.
Yeah.
You've got someone in the school, you've got someone near the school. You've got someone who's got experience with another school. You've got someone who's real experience with both, you know, with food.
Come back with ideas, come back with how much it's going to cost, come back with how you could supplement it, you know, all kinds of different things.
Because I think the sense that I'm getting from Christina that I saw when we looked at the giant RFP was like, oh my God. I mean, it's just like, the, just the regulations are.
Yes. So how, so would you be interested in serving on that committee?
I voiced my interest months ago and it still stands.
Well, maybe we've turned you off completely with our discussions.
I've been here every, you know, other year for ten years, so I don't think it's going away.
I make a motion that we nominate Rachel Glickman to head a committee.
I'll second it.
Called the Food Improvement Committee.
I'll second that motion, even though I'm chair and I hate to do that.
I already sent it.
Oh, you did? Oh, good, excellent.
But you're confusing.
And a friendly amendment to my own, are we in discussion? Friendly amendment and to reach out to potential other committee members and recruit them.
Okay. But I would also have to ask that we try to close some of these communication loops. Because it sounds like there have been committees that I was not aware of in the past. So we need to make sure that whoever's been on these committees in the past is also invited to join and that whatever work those committees have done comes to one centralized place. So we don't just keep spinning our wheels on this issue.
You should have a school board member that you can connect with, so.
And we should put you on a regular school board, you know, hey, what's going on? And come, you know, quarterly maybe and say, hey, what are you working on? And, you know, run it past us. And that way, on a night on camera, people can hear, people can get interested in it and understand what we're talking about. So we don't approach people next budgeting season with, oh, and by the way, here's, you know. It's very helpful if we can get a year behind us and have some, a longer thought process about this.
Start right now. But unfortunately, I don't think we can, we have to go with something right now, so. But hopefully we could get a good chef.
Well, hopefully it'll taste good. Well, that's all the chef, I think. Yes, Michael, we have votes, we have to vote. So all those in favor of the motion, sorry, Michael's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Maze and abstentions?
Good luck.
Thank you, Rachel, for taking that on.
You've been trying a long time.
I have. And my parting words are, I will do my best in my capacity as a volunteer and a parent, but I also need to feel like the school board and the, and the leadership of the school is behind this effort. Otherwise, it's not going to go anywhere. So thank you guys for.
I think we'd love to. I think it's the cost, it's the money like everything else, unfortunately.
No, but I think that, yeah, we have to decide, you know, I mean, it's not just, you just don't like it, say there isn't money. But we have to decide what's a priority and I'm sure we'll find, I'm sure once we put a lot of brains to it, we'll find a way to do it.
Yeah. And Joe Carroll, if he can provide with me some of the back and history behind the various people who have come to you and served on committees, that would be great, because I wasn't aware that those committees were happening.
I wouldn't.
Thank you.
I do.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel. Seven twenty-five and I'm doing the warrants. I would entertain a motion to approve the warrant dated five eight twenty eighteen, the amount of seventy-two thousand seven hundred and two dollars and forty-nine cents.
So moved.
Second.
Can I have questions?
Okey-dokey.
Can I go ahead with questions?
Go ahead, I got to get a copy. I didn't print it today.
This voucher supplement says, Joe Carroll, petty cash. Do you get petty, these don't go into, into other items? Like the tournament fees don't go in under the?
That's what I pay, petty cash. I write a check for, oh, it's rare.
You do write the check, but it doesn't get spread into a different category? It goes on, it's continually to go under your petty cash?
Well, it goes under tournament fees, under that account.
Okay, right, but you write a check for those?
I write a check for that. I write a check for the umps and the referees. I write a check for.
Asian.
That's not for me, from petty cash, two thousand dollars, oh, one hundred and fifty-six.
That's Asian two thousand, I don't know what the Asian two thousand is.
I don't either, it must be something that was.
Asian studies from the assembly?
Assemblies.
Oh, assemblies.
So every month I write checks for small amounts.
So you have, you have a thing that's called petty cash in the budget then?
No, it comes out of these account numbers.
Out of the other accounts, okay, but you write it.
Yep. But I make sure that, I've asked that central office and the town referred to, that it used to come out as just Joe Carroll. It's like, no, you need to put petty cash beside it, otherwise it looks like a money check.
Replacement check?
For winter activities.
Okay.
Oh, no, this was for a graduation award last year. The check got lost.
Okay.
And I duplicated it.
And why do we, we have a winter sports refund.
Right, for somebody that broke their leg and didn't participate.
Well, why isn't it a credit to us instead of a debit if it's a refund?
Because it's going to be cut as a payment, right?
So winter sports refund.
We deposited their check, I don't know, and they're refunding it to the parent.
Oh, so the parent's giving it, not, not the budget?
No, they paid it.
Okay, that makes sense.
Now they need to get it back.
All right. This alliance.
Yes.
Is that the total year payment or?
That's one-half payment for the thirty thousand dollar upgrade to the HVAC motherboard.
Trying to catch up here. What's an evergreen fund, Green Mountain?
That's the, that's preschool stuff when I see evergreen fund, I don't do anything with that. I don't know. Evergreen fund.
Isn't that some energy improvement thing?
Through Green Mountain Power?
No, evergreen fund I thought was preschool stuff, but.
No, I think that, that was some energy improvement that we took out of like some.
It's five hundred dollars.
Before my time, it's a payment that we are paying to Green Mountain Power for some energy improvement. It was before my time on the board. I can go to Frank and get that actually for you, Jody.
Just a period.
Budget every year.
Oh, Green Mountain Power principal, okay, green, green, evergreen fund, green, GMP.
Green Mountain Power, some loan that we did some energy improvement or something.
All right.
And we pay overtime.
Sorry?
And we pay overtime.
We pay overtime and I.
And is that, is that the fifth-year loan payment on a five-year loan? Is that the same thing, the five hundred dollars?
The check.
Yes, we're getting to the end of that, I think.
But that's the Green Mountain Power?
Uh-huh. I don't do that.
This is the supplies for our treasurer.
And somebody pulls that.
Okay, I just wondered what kind of supplies that she uses that much for. Because she really doesn't handle the money, it just goes to her and then out again, right? So what kind of thirteen hundred dollar supplies would we need?
Some of these, some things just probably right through the central office, maybe to the treasurer.
Now, my final question is, we asked last meeting, again, to have these a day ahead of time. They came again at three o'clock this afternoon.
They came at two o'clock, I think.
Two twenty-two.
No, two twenty-two.
Two twenty-two, okay.
Last time they came, last time they came early, so I sent.
No, the last time they did not, they came the day of the meeting.
But they came in the morning, they came at seven AM or something. And he'd been out and I did send him an email, I haven't heard back. But this is the first data I have that we're not getting them, so. I didn't get a response to the email. As I said last meeting, I had sent him an email and I said, well, he was out, he didn't get in until Thursday at seven AM. He didn't come back until Thursday, we got them at seven AM, so I think he's doing it. This is the first data I have that he's not. So last time, I mean, that's pretty good, you know, you have a full day to catch up on them.
His email is saying, as requested. We are now requesting a day in his time.
That's always been said, so I will follow up on the email again with Ike and see if they're.
So can I just tell you one thing about it? All the schools get a schedule of when we need to get information and bills to the central office because they take that and then within a certain amount of time run the warrant after that.
Right, efficiently, yeah. She's looking at it.
She took it back because I hadn't sent it.
Oh, no, she doesn't have to see it. I thought you had a question, so.
So, I don't know what that time, when they run the warrants, I think they usually run them on Monday or Tuesday, Monday. That.
Right, whereas we're going to be cautious on.
Moving it back, what that will mean in terms of moving back what I need to get into them in order for things to be paid every two months.
I, because I had sent Ike, twice a month, I mean, not every time.
Twice a month, I'm sorry.
I'm like, yeah. Because I had asked Ike if it was a cycle, because in the email he sent, said, Ike, are we like in an off-cycle? Again, a problem with a Tuesday meeting, we kill ourselves in the minutes and we kill ourselves on the warrants. And so maybe we need to rethink, need to rethink this for next year. But I had asked him that question and he didn't respond and he just sent them at first thing on Thursday morning. So I thought, oh, well, okay, problem solved, we don't need to waste time chatting. So I'll ask him that question. I'll resend the email and ask him if it's possible to get them earlier or if it's a cycle issue and maybe we need to move it to a different, I don't know, move it to a different Tuesday. Then it's going to delay payment, I don't know.
Well, this says on it that it was printed in five-one, so now's five-eight. So it seems to me that we could have it in time.
Well, I'm going to ask Ike the question again. You can put it away for now, he didn't answer my question if it was a scheduling issue or whatever. And so I will do that forthwith.
Thank you. I'd like to have time to take a look at it, that's all.
Truly, any other discussion on the warrants? All those in favor of approving the warrants of five-eight and the amount of seventy-two thousand seven hundred and two dollars and forty-nine cents? Please signify by saying aye. Maze and abstentions? Anything from the administrative reports?
I do, I, just along, many years ago, I used to provide in my administrative report sort of an overview of some of the data that we collect over the year at the beginning of the report. So you have it. It just, I would do it once a month. You'd have an idea of how many discipline referrals, bus referrals, you know, special education referrals, all those sorts of things that change and are depending on the month. But it kind of helps to see why I don't always give you the same number for what's enrollment today.
And these are enrolled full bodies that are here at Dummerston School?
Yes.
Not preschoolers?
No.
Oh, okay.
And this is as of today?
As of today, yeah. And also, you know, you would have seen injury reports during winter activities was not zero.
For one week it was.
Yeah, for one week it was, right.
The snow week?
The one that was canceled.
Yeah, okay.
So I can do that if that's helpful.
I love this. Oh, since May first, though, so this is just the first.
This is just May first. So if I continue to do it, you know, if you see next, the end of May, so if there's one or two, you'll know it's in May. I was kind of, I thought we were doing better on the number of absence and tardies.
That's since the beginning of the year, right?
This is since the beginning of the year. But the number, we have twenty-eight kids that have been absent more than ten times. They have two or three that have been absent more than thirty or forty times.
Wow.
And if we have twenty-two kids that are tardy ten times, we have again, one or two that are tardy. I can't even say the number out loud. Which says to me that, again, the policy that we have governing tardy and attendance, you know, letters go home, help is offered, threats are made. It doesn't.
I will say from being on the other side, as a child who wouldn't get out the door and always like, you know, thirty seconds before, I have great relationships with people who are dashing in with me at that time. Talking with other parents who'd be later than I was, I don't think they also understood the impact on all the other children in the classroom when somebody walks in five minutes late. And I, I wonder if we could do something with incoming kindergarten, sort of an education about how it's really not great for your child, it's not good for the other children, it's really, makes it hard.
How much learning you lose over the course of the year with five minutes.
And to maybe look at, I've, I've thought this for a long time, it'd be really great to have some sort of training within the, for parents and the kindergartners and do some sort of programming so people under, because it's just like, well, leave me alone. You know, I'm a grown-up, without understanding that it's impacting the whole school when somebody walks in ten minutes late and you have to, you know, well, the lunch doesn't work that way now. But like, oh, got to get that lunch order in, and oh. But like, oh, gotta get that lunch order in. I know this one's here. And how we can empower parents to understand and try, you know, I know sometimes there's nothing you can do, but...
There's just some kids that you can't get out the door.
But I remember at some point in a meeting Molly said, somebody said, well, what does it matter if I'm five minutes late? And Molly Stoner happened, it was in some school board meeting or something. She goes, no, it really messes up my day. And she said it in such a nice way that you didn't want, you didn't want to be the one messing up Molly Stoner's day. And I think that maybe there's a way we could talk about the research behind absences and tardies. I'm not going to, I'm not going to opine on that, but...
But I had one student, one kid who walked to school one day because he missed the bus. He didn't miss it after that. But of course, it is, it is walkable from my house, but it isn't from up on Sunset Lake Road or somewhere.
What happens when the bus, none of this, none of the buses being late, okay.
About ten minutes a day is fifty minutes a week. It's a lot of instructional time.
Yeah.
It's a whole class.
It's also the frazzling feeling too of starting your day in a frazzle. And I thought it would be improved by an earlier kind of start time and arrival time, but, well, maybe it has and it was worse. I don't know, but...
Oh, no. I just think if, if we actually provided breakfast, that, that would impact it even more with all of those late students. Because they would get here late and then they might not eat.
I know.
They would miss more time.
Just FYI, like that breakfast, like a grab and go was included in our proposal. So that, you know, bag and go or whatever, so we wouldn't be affecting phys ed schedules. But kids could go to the gym and pick up their breakfast and bring it back to the classroom to eat it. I mean, okay, we have an impact on the classroom, but...
Right, it has its positive benefits, but there would still, there would be other kids sitting there and just be eating. Would they be attending completely to the teacher?
So that's on my list tonight, which is, in the past, you've had breakfast exemption. We need to have that discussion on an agenda and that agenda has to be posted ten days in advance of your meeting.
Okay. So how about I put it on for the next meeting? And I'll get that agenda out forthwith. Because I assume we're going to be doing that.
And that's going to be May twenty-two?
Okay.
That's a question.
That is going, I don't have my...
Okay, I think it is.
Five twenty-two. Oh, and I put breakfast. I put breakfast on there already. On the head of you, Lyle.
Joe, Carol, did you have more?
No, just, you know, noticed that the PTFO made a lot of money at their tag sale.
Oh, did they?
Yes, we made almost fourteen hundred dollars. We've got some new...
Sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm interrupting. I apologize.
The concert's tomorrow night. We've got a bunch of stuff. This is, you know, every day is something day at Demerson. It's going to be coming out at the end of school. I just draw your attention to, once again, graduation is on Thursday. The recognition will be on Tuesday. Students' last day is Tuesday, the nineteenth, and dismissal has traditionally been a half a day at eleven fifty. Teachers' last day is the twenty-first. I hope you all got your playground survey.
I did.
And were able to prepare. Great. That will be helpful. Teddy bear cheese coming up.
Actually, before Lyle, I just want to just remind everybody, if you haven't gotten your survey, administrator's survey and your board surveys in.
Mine. There's just one. Actually, that was also on my list.
I did it.
I don't know. There's one, there's one that's missing. I don't know who it is, so...
Sitting, I know I have it. I just haven't scanned and emailed it.
Oh, so I guess now we know whose it is.
So the one that comes in.
Sitting right on my desk.
Is going to be changing all their answers now.
So, and the only other thing that I have, actually taking your advice, I have been working with the student assistant, assistance professional at the high school and at BAMS to put together this letter to families on drilling. And on the back is information, plus a website that you can go to for more information. It was on NPR yesterday, maybe. So there's talk across the country about this, and electric, E-sigs, electronic cigarettes, vaping and drilling.
Thank you for doing this, Lyle. This is really... It's really, I mean, I went home and asked my daughter about it that night. She's like, oh, yeah, somebody wrote a poem about it and the teacher didn't even understand. You know, it was that cut, like that. And everybody's laughing, you know, so it's really helpful, obviously. Obviously, my ninth grader knows what's going on more than I do, so it's really helpful to be at least ten steps behind her, only ten steps behind her. Thank you. Committee reports. Finance committee?
Finance committee had a meeting. Some takeaways that I want you to know about. We had a long discussion again about whether to have a, about whether it was necessary to form two different committees. An executive committee and a, and a finance committee. And I think we reached the conclusion that, yes, it was the will of the full WSESU board to have two separate committees. So those proposals are going to get put together about what the duties and responsibilities would be for each committee. That took up a good deal of time at the beginning of the meeting. We went through the food service, food, RFB, food bidding. And we've talked about that tonight already. I think I've kind of given input about what happened from the finance committee perspective. Do we owe anything?
Transportation.
Oh, and a transportation bid was going to be going out for, and that again was another very, very extensive. And it sounds like it was going to be for two years or they wanted for a longer period of time.
Right.
The transportation companies.
Are reluctant because of fuel costs.
Yeah.
Is there more than one company?
Not that we know of, but we're really hoping that we can...
Someone said, do, um, do we have Central use somebody different either?
Frank spoke about that and I think he said that they do use somebody different, but they're not big enough to meet the needs of Wyndham.
So we're...
Very nice people.
So we're, just have one person bidding on one group bidding?
I, I don't know. We've sent it to probably like Cosmos, or in Massachusetts, anybody we know.
And is Guilford part of this this year?
They are.
So they've made the decision not to have their own buses?
Correct.
Because they were going to fight it again?
No, they made the decision to come.
I think that was pretty much it.
My, my evaluation.
Oh, yeah, and we were discussing how to evaluate the superintendent and under which committee. Whether that would be an executive committee function or finance committee function or the full board. And I don't think any conclusions were really reached. More information was needed about reaching back out to the SBA about what their three sixty was and really what's included in the price that had been quoted for the service that they would provide, like what exactly is involved. Because that really wasn't, hasn't been clarified yet. Trying to remember anything else?
There's a full WSESU meeting.
Coming up.
May thirty.
May thirty.
Six o'clock at CUSIC.
Where?
May thirty-six o'clock at the CUSIC.
CUSIC.
Excellent. Can I just clarify? You talked at the beginning about the WSESU finance committee. Thought there needed to be two different committees.
So the finance committee has been, has been meeting for a long time as a quasi-finance, well, finance and quasi-executive committee. They've been kind of handling some executive roles. So one of the things that has been discussed at the full board level, what, what are the duties and what should those be for the, for the finance committee? And should we give executive powers, meaning the full WSESU board? Should that full board be giving executive powers to the finance committee or should there be a separate executive committee? And so there's been a series of discussions at a series of meetings over the last, really, year, I would say, about this issue. And still talking about it.
Still talking about it. It was no definitive, yes, we need to have two.
We'll see. It seemed like that already happened.
I thought it was pretty definitive at the SU meeting. That was my impression, that the full SU had decided that it was going to be separate. I was, maybe I nodded off, but I thought it was pretty clear, so I'm not clear why the finance committee wanted to talk about it.
They're supposed to be coming up with who goes where and who handles what, I think.
And come up with, yeah, that was the...
There were some good, there were some good points, I will say, there were some very good points raised at the meeting about, that an executive committee really isn't regularly... In, in many organizations, an executive committee is not a reg, you don't regularly schedule executive committee meetings. But that you have an executive committee that's available to deal with an emerging situation that would need an executive level overview. And so obviously, I mean, my, my take is those are the people that you'd want to put on that type of a committee, the people who could take a look at the full scope of it. And those might not be the finance committee members.
They shouldn't be. It's different.
Maybe the finance committee could be a numbers person, for example. Yeah, but there was some interesting and new perspective, I think, that you had at the finance committee level when we got further into the discussion again.
So we have a meeting before that, so that we can talk, the board can talk about how they, how they would like the three members to vote? Or do we not give any direction to the three members?
No, you can give direction to the three members. The direction's already been given, but we can, I can put it on the agenda for next time. I don't think our agenda, I don't think we're going to... I mean, you know, you go in there and you, the board has a direction. If there's new information, then I'm going to bring it back and say, oh, I didn't think of that. It didn't enter into our conversation. This could go on for the rest of our born days. I will put it on the agenda for us to discuss. Act forty-six, we had a meeting last Thursday night of the agents committee just to kind of bring people up to date about where the process is. That was pretty much the whole meeting, also talking about the small school grants a little bit and making sure. I was hoping that somebody from Guilford would come just so that they were aware of what's going on with small school grants, because I know that they rely upon them. We're on a holding pattern until the secretary proves our plan and sends it on to the Board of Education. So that will, you know, that'll come out June first.
Then we talked about the small school grant and...
That's on the agenda under new business. I added it to the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Because you had asked me to do that.
Okay.
So I did that.
All right.
And I didn't put buildings and grounds on as a committee on here, because it's really, I put them under, that under new business, the building maintenance contract and the paving bid under old business. So is there any other committees that I'm forgetting? Moving on, the paving bid. I gave you all a copy of the bid. It is going out on Thursday. As you will all recall, Lee is, Lee and Lori Pichette are handling the process. There's a pre-bid meeting here on May fifteenth, six-thirty AM, if anybody wants to come.
Did you give me one of those?
I may not.
I don't have to do it.
There's one sitting around someplace. I made it. And then we will award, we will open them and Lori's going to pass them over to me so they don't pass through the school. So nobody has to worry. They will open the bids on Tuesday, June fifth, at six-thirty. Lee suggested, no, is that correct? We will award it on the fifth. Lee's suggestion, I'm sorry, they will come to us for the twenty-second and we will open them our next meeting. Lee suggested that we spend two weeks and not award it right then, because there might be some sort of question in how it's bid. And so if you've said that you're going to do it right then, the same day you open it, it doesn't give you any time to review. So I took his advice for that. Any questions on that? Forward emails. Done. Thank you, Michael.
Oh, not quite done. I'm sorry. I passed her on the sheet. If you want a forward, can you write what email address? So I have all that information.
So Christina@demerson.org and then I'm going to put the forward in.
Christina N., right? Yeah.
Yeah, Christina N., and then, so I'm putting, okay.
So if you could all put your...
That sounds like was the way to go, I guess.
Yep. No, I think it...
Depending on your preference.
Depending on your preference.
You can get what, everybody can get what you want. So that's terrific. So you're with me. Oh, budget review. Okay. Yeah, I'm sure.
Um, you want our present email here?
So...
Does anybody...
On whichever address you want it forwarded to.
Next to it.
J. Normdoad.
Did you, did you guys bring your budgets from last week? Any need a copy?
We weren't here.
I apologize.
Thank you.
That was that Thursday.
Can you go make a copy?
It's the year-to-date budget.
Oh.
We went over it last time and it was eight-thirty and I said only a fool does this at eight-thirty. Um, yeah. Still foolhardy, but I'm going for it.
Do you understand that?
Of course, if we wait long enough, then we'll have the final budget. We won't have anything to... It's pretty good, though. It's got a pretty good ledger on this.
I need to throw some pens away here.
No, that's it. No. Oh, how many I need?
I need one, basically. Do you need one?
Yes, please.
What's that?
Do you, you need one, one, two?
You have the budget, right?
Yeah, I have the budget from last time.
Okay, have it with you?
No.
Okay.
We're going to do that. Well, wait a minute.
Do four.
No, I didn't bring that with me.
So just on the email for one more second.
Okay.
I will ask, I will ask Kevin to communicate with you at the email addresses, which we're all communicating with each other. You know, and getting emails from one another about agendas and whatnot. That's the email address that I will provide to Kevin and I will provide to him. Michael M. at Demerson, Jody N. at Demerson, Emily E. at Demerson, Susan M. at Demerson, Christina N. at Demerson. And it looks like two people want their email forwarded, Jody and Christina. And two people, three people, do not want their emails forwarded. Is that correct?
Sounds right.
Great.
How many times can we send email in one meeting?
Oh, my gosh.
So I just thought it was a great exercise to kind of look where our spending is. And before the end of the year, I loved it so much, I'm going to recommend we do it maybe twice a year before the year's out, just so we kind of know what's going on. It's, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility. It's like one of our major things, so understanding where the money's going is really helpful. So we'll be along momentarily. And then Jody and I met last week because she had a bunch of questions. And I forwarded and nobody else had questions, so I'm sorry to review for the rest of you. Frank sent me back the answers to our questions. I gave Jody a copy. But if it pleases the board, I will just like give a quick run-through so we can kind of understand where we're at. Like, it's a good experience, too, that we're looking at the budget so that a whole year doesn't go by before we go through budgeting again and... Did you do it?
Thank you.
Here's Frank's answer. Okay, there. Okay, I got it. Okay. So the first page is our revenue, expected revenue, and you'll see that we are still needing two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. And so I, we don't usually, haven't been doing a year-to-date, so I didn't know how the money comes in. But according to Frank, all that money is expected to come in. So the revenue, this whole revenue page, you can flip over, we're going to be at our, you know, within one percent one way or the other of our projected revenues, it looks like. So moving on, there's some budget items that are a little bit off and we had several questions on them. There's, the healthcare is something that we, when we budgeted, we didn't know that we were going to have these HRAs. So under every line item, wherever there's health insurance and HRAs, it looks like we're saving money on health insurance. But then it looks like we have this non-budgeted item. It's not a budgeting problem. It's a change, as is always the case... It's not a budgeting problem, it's a change, as is always the case in educational finance, it's a change in the funding and how we're providing healthcare. So, the net effect, we're already seeing the advantage of, some of which will have to be sent to the governor. So, uh, the guidance line item, you'll see that's over budget. Oh, and the other thing I should say, the encumbrance where Joe Carroll had gone, goes through, and anything we know we're going to have to spend before the end of the year, like teacher salaries and things like that, that's covered. So the budget balance is things that, um, haven't been spent yet, or haven't been encumbered, or that we're doing better than budget. So you can't just look at the, um, budget balance, because not everything has been encumbered, probably, I would suspect, right?
Um, right, my best estimate of what we're gonna need has been covered. I don't encumber the salaries, though, I don't do it.
It's done by Frank, though.
Frank encumbers, yes, he does.
Right, so they, sorry, oh, I see what you're saying, yes. They have been encumbered, and Joe Carroll has encumbered everything.
I just do encumbering with discretionary line items.
Um, so the guidance line items up, that's mostly due to, uh, this year, the guidance having healthcare. So, it's nothing we can predict, um, it's just a change in how things are going on.
But how about the salary, that was one of my questions.
Um, oh, she did an extra program. Frank answered, that's on the answer, it is, da-da-da-da-da, da-da-da. Uh, additional payment for doing a literacy camp, or a lit camp. Maybe it's the cool camp, but I think that's short for literacy.
Yeah, it's, it, she, you were reimbursed through Title I. She worked at the Title I literacy camp last summer.
Ah.
So that came through on revenue someplace?
So that came through on revenue someplace, yes.
Oh, thank you for that, that's interesting, okay. Excellent. That's, that's money in our pockets. Nursing, everything looks good, um, in terms of budget. Looks like we're doing a little bit better, but who knows? Library, looks like we're doing a little bit better. School board, we're doing better, because our legal fees haven't been touched, that's predominantly, um. And I'm wondering about our dues and fees, like, if something hasn't been taken out yet, like, it just seems like we're, we're way above.
We talked early in the year, were they taking out two installments?
For the, the SBA, maybe?
Yeah, I'll check on that.
That does ring a bell, that they were going to just have to, yeah, that rings a bell, don't bother checking, that rings a bell. A thousand dollars, one way or the other.
But the school board's salary was, was, um.
That's your salary there.
But that was before this even happened, he had the five-hundred dollars there.
Because they hadn't given it to you yet.
Oh, okay. And so they're not gonna give it to you.
And so they're not gonna give it to you, so that's.
It's gonna go to Joe Carroll.
Gonna go to the kids.
Discretion.
Says it in the minutes, it goes to me.
I know. I get them, then you give them to me, I'm gonna change them.
That's right. When is this going up? Okay. Under the principal's office, um, the secretary's salary has some additional compensation for subs online services. Again, substitute?
She substitutes.
I don't know what that is.
Subs online is arranging the subs for the school, every day, which.
Wow, on Sundays can be jobbing, that's the problem, yeah.
Gotcha. So there's some additional compensation for that. Um, treasurer, I think we just wrote a, um, I think these were, some of this was in the warrant, so that's gonna be sent over to the treasurer's office, to Charlotte.
And that was my question as to what the supplies, why they were so high.
Uh, custodial, that. So, we have not spent the paving money, so you'll notice that, um, that paving money has not been encumbered, because we don't have a bid yet. So the money that we're up is, the, the big chunk of the money that's up, if you look under the operations, maintenance of plant services, it looks like we've got forty-seven thousand dollars left to spend. I'm not sure we really have that to spend, but I know thirty thousand or so has been earmarked to go to paving. But, that was an important item for us in the whole paving bid process, in case, because the work has been much more extensive than what we envisioned in budgeting a year ago, um, that there might be some room in there, if the bids don't come in or we need to. Grounds maintenance, that's still going on through the end of this contract year, so.
All right, and since we've done this, I've encumbered money for, to take us through June thirtieth with Eric McGowan.
Okay. Uh, transport services are a bit, I didn't ask that question, did I? So, our transport services are a bit over budget this year, not huge. Do you have any idea about why?
I don't.
Because you think we would've had that contract? And so maybe we had to do something extra? That was sort of a question that I didn't get answered, that I meant to ask Frank, and then. Uh, field trips, there's a lot of, there's a lot of money for field trips in there, Joe Carroll.
Right, they'll, it won't look this way when we do it again.
Okay. So our district.
It'll be better, huh?
So when you look at the net of our district-wide costs, you gotta remember, we're taking thirty thousand dollars out for paving, so we're kind of right on the money there. And more's coming out because of field trips and grounds maintenance that wasn't encumbered. So, we might be a little bit over budget when we look at the district-wide costs, but we, don't worry, don't sweat it. Preschool costs are up, but that just means we have more preschoolers. That will mean there's more ADM next year for us all to share in, and hopefully more kindergartners. So, that's really a good thing, even though it seems like a hit this year. I asked Frank, our elementary teacher salaries are over what we had budgeted. And, um, it was moving, according to Frank, it was moving a teacher from middle school to an elementary teacher position, um, except that that position was replacing a pretty high-level teacher. So I'm not sure I'm following that answer entirely, because I was thinking of the first-grade position, that we had a retiring person, and I thought we had budgeted mid-grade, and so.
Right, I thought it was, um, uh, if you look at the secondary, that was down, it was, um, categorizing them more according to page six and seven and eight, including art, music, and.
Right, that's what you had said, but Frank had said it was just, that was Frank's answer, so maybe.
Frank had said that it was a teacher, was it?
It was the transfer of a seventh, eighth grade teacher into, um, yeah.
Academic support, so Jen Brown.
But that doesn't seem quite right, because Jen Brown was replacing a teacher who was prob, had been here for a long time as well. So that's what I, did you follow what I'm saying there?
Uh, yes. Who did you?
Linda, Linda Skrenys.
Right. So that would've been a wash.
Yeah, what we don't know is how much was taken from the elementary for the academic support, and how much was taken from secondary.
Sorry, we reclassified or not.
So is he putting both of those, you think he's putting both of them into elementary?
Elementary, that's what I'm wondering. Because I, I would've thought that at least part of both the previous person and this person's, would've come out of secondary salaries.
Actually, Jen would've been the first one that could come out of secondary salaries, because she's like, second. Looks like there was some pretty good.
Well, and then, but then you also have a retiring first-grade teacher in the mix, who was rehired, who was replaced, and we, I think we mid-budgeted that, if I can remember that far back. And we had somebody who's pretty new to this, um, new to the step, not the, not the step you're thinking of, not the, she's not in a behavioral program, but salary steps. And then Keith Marshall, who's a relatively newer teacher, so, um, I don't know, maybe I'll try and follow up with Frank on that a little bit more, or is Frank ever scheduled to come here?
I can see if I can get Frank to come here on the twenty-second.
It just helps to understand if we're budgeting correctly and.
But it was the same, it seems to me it was the same conversation that we had when you were presenting the budget, that you looked at the elementary and it was up higher, and if you looked at the secondary, it was lower.
Lower. But he says that was just because of the person replacing, so. You can read the, oh, well, Jody, you, can you give Joe Carroll the answer? So, oh.
Here.
And we can't access that on our, through, we can't access the salaries and stuff to answer the question ourselves, so I'm sorry to have Frank do it.
So he did it here, though?
At the very bottom there, he answers the questions about the, that's his answer for the elementary salary?
The new hires were somewhat below, separate ones. So what is it? They took Jen's salary out. It's the STEM teacher.
Well, I think I can ask Frank, and, after eight o'clock, we shouldn't, uh.
Yeah.
Make you try to figure out accounting codes and classifications of teachers. Um, so if we get to, um, on page four, regular programs, direct instruction, there's a couple line items, course reimbursement. So this is, um, the fourth and fifth lines down, course reimbursement is up, but that's reflecting actuals, or we have teachers that are, uh, modeling lifelong learning, which is excellent. So I'm curious if we've, if we'll get hit with this next year, because, um, from the finance end of things, because these programs, we may just, for our next budgeting cycle, recognize what our real expenses are going forward. Um, our cost per copy program is way over, also, I asked Frank about that, if, and it, and last year, we were way over budget with it, um, at the end of the year. And so this year, it's looking way over budget on it, so I think it's another item that we should, um, think about in our next budgeting cycle.
Copy?
The cost per copy program. But Frank did write to me and say that we should maybe look at it, but he expects replacement systems will lower costs in FY nineteen. The other item, the, uh, regular elementary, other fees item, that's noticeably over, um, five, four thousand of dollars of that is for the Alice program, for the safety program training, and I think we'd all agree, that's money well-spent. So when we look at, um, the balance on regular programs, direct instruction, we're still, sort of, it looks like we're doing okay. We've started now budgeting for the one percent program improvement, so that's, uh, taken care of, but it's a little hit to our budgeting process for this past year. And you'll see, we talked about the secondary teacher's salary, the money that came out of the elementary level is showing up in the secondary level, so net, we're ahead of budgeting, it's good. It's just knowing where it all came from. Uh, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh-duh-duh-duh, that's all I have. On that page, again, this, the same, the secondary one percent program, people are doing it, so we're going to budget for it. Winter activities, is that real? I forget, we talked about this, did we? That's pretty much done, right? So that's, so that's good, winter activities came in less expensive than we had thought, so. Wonderful. So, adala-la-la-la, going to after-school co-curriculars ahead. Coaching salaries are way ahead, too. Because we're not doing as much as we had, we had budgeted maybe for some girls' programs that didn't.
Right, and has girls' softball.
Softball, yeah.
You know, in some of the ones through the budget process, we just, I didn't say anything, because didn't know at the time whether or not we would get one, when we looked at next year's budget. And it's sort of when the final calculations are made, when it comes down to the bottom line, it's nice to have something in some place that we didn't have to spend to cover those areas that we hadn't and couldn't have anticipated, the expense that, you know, obviously looks over budget, like some of the non-specialized testing and dues and fees, um, this year.
Well, all in all, it looks, you know, the pluses and the minuses. And I don't know how the food services subsidy works, we should've talked about this under food service, and maybe.
Did you buy not anything about the insurance, or the insurance?
No, I didn't, I looked again, I sp, I spent an hour going through this audit. I don't see the insurance money there, and I don't see it here, so.
And it may have been all done in last year's budget?
No, I was looking at last year's budget, in the revenue, to see, like, some miscellaneous, so. That's on my list of things to ask Frank. That's on my list of things to ask Frank. I thought I was just missing it somewhere, because I had looked carefully in this year's, and then you said, no, it was, then when we looked up, it was last year's, and I went back through here, so I didn't want to bother Frank until I had made sure that I couldn't find it myself. Oh, the, the one other, uh, thought I had was, virtual high school is listed as a district-wide expense, and it was like five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. I'm just wondering if going forward, that really is a secondary expense, isn't it? Because I, oh, so. Oh, where was this?
Where'd you see that?
So, oh, I have the whole account number written out here, oh-oh-one, oh-one-oh-oh-two, two-oh-one. It's under district-wide, it is program improvement.
I think it's program.
I'm missing a page, uh, there was something that was over budget, and it was virtual high school. And I wondered why that's in district-wide, because.
What do you mean by district-wide, question?
Well, I assume district-wide expenses are like nurses and guidance and library.
Those are district-wide expenses?
You mean, district-wide, meaning school-wide?
School-wide.
Oh.
There was that reclassification thing that we ran the report, hold on, I know how I'll find it.
There's a program improvement, um, is it two-two-one-zero, three-two-zero?
No, it's oh-oh-one, oh-one-oh-oh, oh-oh.
Two-two-oh-one.
Two-one-zero.
Oh, two, two.
Two-two-oh-one, two-two?
Yes, here. Point five. Here it is. So there was a journal reclassification to district-wide, expense of five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five, so that's.
What page?
I'm sorry, no, you don't have this, on a report. So we ran all the reports to answer as many questions we could without going to Frank. And so. They, they budgeted to district-wide. And so why would that be a district-wide expense that, to me, would be like program improvement, secondary?
Yeah.
That, that's just a, it's a nutty question, but I just think it's appro, like, it's good to understand the cost of our middle school, so if you have six thousand dollars, that I don't see too many sixth graders taking virtual high school. I think we should really understand the cost of something, so. More time spent on that than was needed, I'm sorry, move on. Any other questions or thoughts? But it looks like we're doing well, I didn't want us to go out and put something to bid. I'd like, I just wanted us to kind of understand where we were in a budget level, as we have this bid going out. And it's also good to look at this, I miss, I miss looking at the numbers, too. I know how fun it is for everybody, a beautiful summer.
But this is the end of March, and we are now getting to the end of May, so.
Yeah.
We will see updates at the end, end of May or into June?
I would suspect not, because there's not much we can do about it at that point. So, it would be helpful, maybe, early in the year, to review where we're actually at.
Well, we might want to, I don't know, if you want to spend something.
Yeah.
But, you know, if you want to spend something before the year ends, if you have any surplus, if you, you know.
We can't now, we've been first, they're wise enough to know. Shut it out early. Yeah.
Are you talking about the state?
I'm talking about, um, central office, and their budgeting, closing up theirs, that by June thirtieth, requires us to, um, either encumber or, uh, aside from emergency spending, we don't, they don't process new things at this point.
At this point, good.
You have encumbered a goodly amount for paving, yeah?
Well, that's, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Hmm, did I?
Well, we all know that's there. We've done the lunch program bid discussions, and the breakfast exemption's on for next week. Safety, anything new on the safety front?
Well, we are doing another safety drill, which we, I'm calling all our drills now safety drill, based on our last meeting with first responders, Brattleboro, and Nodder will be here from the Drunk, so please help us.
Okay.
And we're calling it a rally point, safety drill, and other than that, it's still being sort of developed, and how we're going to proceed with that. The other thing that came out of the work that
Do we want to do this in executive session?
Oh. That was all I was going to say, though.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for speaking of that.
That wasn't all I was going to say about it, actually.
Is there more that you need to discuss with us, that we should be doing in executive session? Because we could just bump it till the end, get through new business, and bump it till the end, do executive session, that way, yeah.
Let's do that, okay. Thank you, Michael.
Sorry.
Sorry? Better, better safe than. Building maintenance, so Dan Normandow, um.
I didn't get any, okay.
Sorry?
I didn't, you got response from Dan?
Yeah, he said he was going to send it to you tonight.
Thank you.
I just gave you something that had it on, didn't I? It was the first set of papers I gave you.
That was, um.
First set of papers? I thought, because I don't have them here, so I thought I gave it to you.
You're looking for the thing?
You got it?
Yes.
No, he said he was going to send it to you, I don't know why, maybe.
Maybe he's forgotten it either.
I doubt.
There you go.
Thank you.
You got one.
You have one now?
No, I'll take, I'll take one now.
So this was a really great help to have Dan, who has been in long conversations with Alliance Mechanical, actually has a background in building mechanics, to take a look at what Gary was suggesting, because Joe Carroll and I read through it three times, and I scored well on meaning for comprehension, but I could not figure out if we, what was being asked of us, and what, if it was worth doing.
He has you here, but I don't think he took you.
I don't think it went, or something, I think maybe he just forgot to send it to you, so. Anyway. Basically, I think it's a no-brainer, because the incentives and the payback will be about two years to do this incremental, uh, la la la, five thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars worth of work.
We could get the fourth, six thousand?
We'll get six thousand dollars in incentives, yes.
So, and that.
Kind of a no-brainer, yeah.
Plus, you're saving money on top of that.
Plus, yes, plus, it's a good thing to do for the, for the system.
It's like it would, even if you didn't have incentives, it looks like we'd pay for it itself in two years.
Right.
That's the way I'm reading it.
Right.
Okay.
Has he walked anybody through the system, you were going to ask him to walk people through, or?
To have Alliance walk people through?
No, you
Yeah, at some point.
Dan walked with all of you.
Yeah, no, at some point, but in order to get this done, if he could just review it, and then have him walk through with Mike, with buildings and grounds again, but I wasn't scheduling that for this past week, especially, it's realty season, too, so his, and this was a bigger ask, this was, I mean, he went back and forth with Gary a bunch, trying to figure this whole thing out, so, and, and, so I feel like, that's a big ask already, as I wrote to him, that was a bigger ask than I thought. So, I guess we can't get that done this year, because you can't sneak in anything, huh?
I can do this this year.
We could do that this year?
Yes.
So do we need to make a motion to expend this? Or, it would probably make sense to agree to do it as a board? Do people want to?
I mean, I think, yeah, I think we need to do anything with incentives behind it right now
Before they go.
In light of losing them, leading down the road.
Right.
Because they're cutting back on some of those.
Right, so, and I say that, that that's why we should do it, not that I know that there's six thousand dollars waiting there to
Right.
Encumbered and ready for.
That is a good, that's a very astute answer. Do people feel comfortable going forward and saying, go forward with this?
Yes, yes.
Excellent, I would entertain a motion, that we move forward with the efficiency Vermont, Alliance Mechanical, additional work proposal for five thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, Jody, for making that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, for seconding. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Day's abstentions?
The ayes have it.
Just disappeared. Likes your pink sweater.
Continuous improvement plan discussion.
So you have the, you have the continuous improvement plan now?
Okay.
And I, my preference would be that you have, take some time to look at it.
Okay.
In that time, staff will have some time to look at it, and then we can talk about it, and others need more time.
So, the twenty-second looks kind of chock-a-block full. Would it make sense to do it on the twenty-sixth, when we were talking about doing the integrated field review, review? The June twenty-sixth order?
Your whole family has birthdays on meeting dates, now that.
The integrated field review? We were going to go over it, just, and look at the data from it, because we had gotten it, but we had never, similar to the continuous improvement plan, we got it, but we haven't actually ever sat down and talked about it.
Okay, because that, 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 those results came back district-wide?
Right, I know, I know.
Just, you did this part, but you need to do this part.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
So that might be a quick, a relatively quick discussion, so should we put on the building, the continuous improvement plan onto the twenty-sixth, then?
Yes.
It's sort of an interesting, like, we can talk about both things together a little bit.
And we can talk about it, also know that I've sent it to Paul, who, I think, in the process of getting the district-wide continuous improvement plan approved, once that's approved, then our continuous improvement plan, with whatever block decisions or provisions that we make, will also need to go to the state for approval. And in that process, so there'll be, we have three different variables coming in, in terms of looking at it, the school board, teachers, Paul, and then ultimately the state.
It's going to be really interesting to kind of hear the teacher's piece and Paul's piece, is there some way we could have, like, a big, you know, jamboree?
Possibly. The other thing about this continuous improvement plan is, it seems like smart poles of the past, you know, find a positive way to say it and work towards it, gone. This is like, you don't do it right, you're really bad at it, make it better. I mean, it's just sort of, when you look at it, it requires you to look at what's not working, examine why it's not working, and, and what you're going to do to fix it. Which is, makes sense, you know, it's an easier way to look at sometimes, but it's just so different than any of the action planning goals.
Well, we'll read it with that lens, then.
Are we at a point where we want to add some things to meetings, or not? We've been adding some things already.
We're getting there.
Because I've got a couple of thoughts I'd like to see us discuss somewhere along the line.
Why don't we do that right before executive session?
Okay.
Because if something else comes up from any other discussion, then we'll have to circle back, and that doesn't.
Okay.
So the twenty-sixth gives you plenty of time to do everything you need, if we meet the twenty-sixth, that's not going to interfere with your schedule, from getting it to the places it needs to go?
The twenty-sixth of May?
June.
June is fine.
Okay.
It's fine.
Excellent. And I sent around something Jody had gotten from Marsha.
Well, this is something I wrote.
Oh, okay, you wrote it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm going up to Rutland, to the State Board of Education meeting, next week, and there's a lot of people coming from all over the state to talk about small school grants, and the metrics that go with that, and did she send this around to everybody?
I sent this by email.
It's kind of an outline of the things, the metrics, the five metrics that they're talking about, and
Are those copies?
I've got, I've got one here, I've got another one in here.
Let me make it.
I've got my copy right here.
Lot of paper tonight.
That's why the copy machine's so busy, and we run over the funds.
I know. I like the old mimeograph paper.
Oh, really?
Yes, I love that. Oh, I love that smell, I think it, I, I, yeah.
Did you have to do this kind of thing with it?
Loved that.
You're not that old.
Are you kidding me? I remember doing the mimeograph, I was like, can I go down to Ms. Cronish, the principal's office, and do the mimeograph? They would love, they would trust me to do that. I can smell that smell.
I think that I can do it.
I am that old. You don't know what we're talking about.
Did you ever, how to get the type on the paper? Did we commit mimeograph?
Oh, I don't think I ever did that, no.
I've got mine, Joe Carroll. So, the reason I brought this up is that, because I wanted to make sure that, whether I was going to go up there to speak for myself, or whether I could go up there and speak for the board, and, for some of these things, it doesn't matter to me, but we're trying a whole bunch of people in the state, to get them to be more reasonable about their metrics for small school grants, which were originally put into place for small schools to give them that extra boost, and which now, with Act forty-six, if you merge, they turn them into merger grants, which doesn't really make sense, because, you know, they're not small schools anymore, type of thing, but, I'm just throwing this out, they've already made a decision on geo-isolation, which to me is horrendous, because it puts small kids on buses for an hour each way, or whatever, and I think they need to start separating high school and elementary school, because they're totally different, and so I think I say that in here. The high-quality education opportunities, they've got the state's educational quality standards, and they, you know, they should, you should use those for this metric, and not get into anything else, is what the thought is. And then the, closing the gap of economically deprived backgrounds, and, which is a very important thing in the state, to do that. So, the feeling is that if you take away the small school grants from some of these very smaller rural schools, you are exacerbating, exas-
Surveying.
Yeah. Anyway, you're making the gap even bigger, because you're not going to have the money in order to, to help these economically deprived backgrounds, and so, you know, and if they do this, if they, if they take it away, then they're really contributing to the failure of the schools, of children of poverty. And then the student to staff ratios, you know, it's a question of, we've gone round and round, who are we talking about? Are we talking about everybody in the SU, and every, everybody, or are we talking about the adults in the building? I mean, you know, and they have to identify that before they can, they can start using the student to staff ratios. And the one that we question is, what difference does it make when you've participated in a merger study, and a submission of report to the State Board of Ed, when alternative structures are actually a study as well, and they're in the, in the law, so, I mean, should that even be a merger, should that even be a metric for a small school grant? And, you know, people are coming from the Northeast Kingdom all the way down here, to, from Marlboro, to come into this meeting to talk about this, and, and how it affects, or how you feel from your area. So I pass this on for thought, add-ons, subtractions?
It's hard, it's, it's hard to say, like, oh, go represent us, because I don't know what's going to come up, I mean, I, I really feel like thirty minutes is a long bus drive, we have kids in this town that probably do, and that's the bus part, it's not getting to the bus, you know? Some kids have five or ten minutes getting to the bus, so if you're talking about a kindergartner, you know, I personally feel that way, I'm not sure how we as, I'm just trying to think of how we as a board could say, yeah, we agree with this, or don't, because each one of these items could have twenty minutes of discussion easily behind them, so I'm trying to think of how we could.
It's not a bus ride to here, it's from where they live to here, and then to Putney, who's the nearest school.
Right.
That's what they're talking about.
Yeah.
And I did write a letter for myself to the State Board on that last month, and took, you know, Kelly Road down there, and the Brattleboro border, and the mileage and the distance, and it's, it's a long way if you've got a child down that way, to be on a bus, and you're, now we're talking pre-k. So, yeah, I understand what you're saying, that's why, you know, I wanted to get it out to the board, to think about it, and
When is this meeting?
This meeting is next Wednesday.
Hmm.
Where is it, Charlie?
It's going to be in Rutland, Rutland High School.
Oh, God.
Because the young man who is one of the students who's graduating this year, that's where he's from, so they'll be honoring him at the same time.
Oh, the Board of Ed, student member?
Yeah, Connor, he's wonderful, the young man. Makes you think that maybe the, the youth is going to be okay.
N equals one doesn't make for a very good study.
No, I know, but. I, I guess I want to know what may be important to all of you in these metrics. I've had the advantage of, of having a lot of information throughout the state to back up what's going on, as well as what some of the others are going to be talking about, where you probably haven't, but.
I actually did start writing a letter to the state about the bus ride thing, because I think, you know, when you talk about what's going on in Burlington, you know, the lay of the land in Burlington versus the lay of the land in Dummerston.
These people don't know.
Fish Road, and you got to wait for the bus, and you got to get down that hill, and you're talking about a kindergarten, I don't think
Or a preschooler.
Yeah. Well, at this point, we don't have preschoolers on the bus, but, I mean, I think that
Vermont's mountains.
Yeah, so it really depends on what district you're in, how this would affect you, and so if you're talking about then taking a bus up to Putney from there, or how that would happen, that, that the metric should be for a kid, how long at different grades, I completely agree with it.
Well, that's, that's what they're saying, the nearest school to you, you, makes you not geographically isolated, because we're only five miles from the Putney.
The school to school.
The school to school.
Kid to school.
Although it says the, the school that has room for you, and, you know, Putney wouldn't have room for us either, we couldn't all, we couldn't take our hundred and forty-seven bodies at this point.
And I have no problem testifying for myself, I just wanted to pass it on to the board, seeing as I'm now a board member.
I think what, from my perspective, to have you go and testify, and sort of bring back what the thought is, and then maybe we could talk about me, writing a board letter in support of that, and that way we can review it, as opposed to kind of
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Letting you loose.
Letting me loose? You don't want to let me loose, huh, Michael?
So I'll put that on for next week, because you all have, it would be fresh in your mind.
We have a meeting next week?
No, she means saying that.
I mean, next, the next meeting.
I know, she keeps saying next week, and I'm thinking, no, no, no.
Letter to the states, the May twenty-second meeting, sorry.
And by that time, you'll be able to watch the thing on, on
Oh, yeah, that's true.
There you go.
It's so fun.
The, the problem with them is, they're in a hurry, we have to get this done, because they've got deadlines, and to me, they're making decisions much too fast, without really thinking of them.
Jody, you mentioned you wanted to add some other things to the agenda for next week?
Yeah, I was thinking, I'd like to talk about the S-Backs testing, there's a lot of stuff going on in the state, and, and also with the State Board of Education concerning S-Backs, so I So, sometime I'd like to talk about testing. You know, I have some real issues with having kids sit for five or six days at a computer. I think that things could be a lot different. But anyway, I'd like to talk about that sometime and I'd like to talk about some of our policies, our personal policies.
Our, our district policies?
Our local policies.
Our local policies. We have district policy, I mean, SU policies. And, and the thing that I found out, too, is that a lot of people have, a lot of boards have their policies online and Dummerston does not have our, our personal, not our personal, but our board policies online.
Yeah, I would love to get, I don't actually have all the policies of, I have the SU policies, but I...
No, I, I, I do have our policies now.
You do?
Barbara sent them to...
Barbara, you got them? Oh.
So, I can forward them, too. Is that going to be...
Are they digital?
She sent them to me by email.
Oh, excellent. Can you send them to the whole board?
That's okay?
Yeah.
That's information.
Yeah.
It's information.
Or you can send it to me and I'll send it out to the rest of the board if that's easier.
It doesn't matter.
Just send it out to the whole board, you're the clerk, so that's fine.
Am I on anybody's email? This is changeover. Would you like to be on our group email list? No, I do not want another email.
So, I think we're going to move into executive session to discuss any safety updates unless there's anything else that anybody wants to add to the agenda. And I don't think we'll be conducting any business after that, so...
We won't be, are you expecting a decision?
There's no decision, no.
We have to state it a certain way now.
We are going into executive session. Oh, I was not thinking about this because I wasn't thinking for the, for the purposes of discussing...
I should know.
A matter which...
Put the board at a disadvantage.
Not the board at a disadvantage, public safety.
Public safety at a disadvantage.
Yes. Put the safety of our students at a disadvantage.
I'll get the one.
I should have it because I've been fussing at people who don't do this for a year now, so I should have it.
Well, I asked beforehand if we had executive session and we didn't think we did. And so, I usually look it up before the meeting.
I'm sure Lyle has it.
I could carry you with me.
The boards are getting better.
I think I've pretty much got it, but, oh, it's good to see the thing. Municipal school security or emergency response measures. So, I'm, I move that we move into executive session to discuss under, yes, that's what I was looking to, under 1VSA 313. Thank you, that's exactly what I was looking at. To discuss a matter of municipal or school security, the disclosure of which would jeopardize public safety.
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
May's abstentions? The ayes have it.